All right. Good evening. I'd like to bring our meeting for this evening for the Evolith City Council. 5:30 start, March 3rd at the council chambers here in Evolith. Meeting to order. Can I get roll call, please? Jackie?
Yes. Councillor Rousey?
Here.
Councillor Koyvenen?
Here.
Councillor Purpich?
Here.
Councillor Lilis?
Here.
Mayor Rowan?
Here. Thank you very much. We'll start off with approval of minutes. Can we get approval of minutes for the city council meeting on February 18th of 2025? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Move by Purpich, support by Koyvenen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. We'll move on to minutes of the city council special meeting, February 24th of 2025. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved?
Support.
Support by Lilis. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. Thank you. Approval of the agenda? Is there anything, any of you gentlemen, like added to the agenda this evening that you don't see listed? Okay. We'll approve this agenda. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by Purpich?
Support.
Support by Rousey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll proceed. We'll start with the public comment. Public comment works for three minutes per person. Chat about what you like. You don't necessarily get a comment back from us, but it's your chance to be able to talk to the council and then obviously the people that are at home as well. So we'll open up the microphone to whomever would like to start.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council staff. My name is Mike Jurgovich. I am from Chisholm. This is my first time at one of your council meetings, so I'm enjoying myself. I learned a lot. I got to meet a few of you and got to take a look at your beautiful artwork in your council chambers. I know we've had this done in Chisholm a number of years ago and it's very tedious and time consuming, but it looks really good. But the reason I'm here tonight is not to compliment you on your beautiful city home. It's to talk to you a little bit about an article that appeared over the weekend in Masabi Daily News, or excuse me, Masabi Tribune. And talk a little bit about the Hall of Fame. St. Louis County Northern Commissioners, McDonald, myself and Commissioner Nelson of this district, feel very strongly about the Hall of Fame staying put. We believe that this is the place it needs to be, the birthplace of hockey in northeastern Minnesota. Nothing could be more profound than to have this state in Evolith, Minnesota. We don't know where you stand and I know, I know there won't be dialogue between us, but we want you to know that we are lockstep with any and all of you that are about keeping this Hall of Fame, this gem of a Hall of Fame, in its current location. This is an overgrab by Metro residents and we do not want to see this go. There's got to be a better way and we are lockstep with you. I know I've spoken to a couple of you and I know how you feel about it. At the end of the day, we'll be here and whatever it takes to get this done will be in your corner. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it and very good to be here and meet some of you and see some of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anybody else that'd like to take the microphone tonight? Okay. With that then, we'll move on to appointments and presentations. We have the appointment of Kenneth Larson of the, have a great one, of the Joint Cable Television Access Board. We have a motion to reappoint.
He's been on there for a long time and he does a good job. Very conscientious and does a real good job for us in that, that role.
I support.
Motion, Koyvenen, support, Lilis. Any further discussion on that?
Just want to thank Ken for his many years of exemplary service. He's been a real observer, great public servant for this city for a long time.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Anything else there? Okay.
I concur.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Does anything further? Nope. All in favor say aye of keeping?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will utilize Ken and his, his agenda of moving forward in the future. Our consent to agenda will approve our payroll for February 1st through the 15th of 2025. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Rousey?
Support.
Support by Purpich? Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll pay our people. The second one is approval of claims, February of 2025. We have motion to move forward.
So moved.
Move? Motion, excuse me, second?
Support.
Support?
Then I will be abstaining, Mayor.
Abstaining. Understood completely. Okay. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will take care of that as well. Thank you very much. All right. As we get into the heart of things, we have our new business set, ready to roll. First up is our quote for the 2025 police squad car equipment. And I believe it was our last meeting that we approved the squad car.
Two minutes ago.
Okay. And you wasted no time like jumping right back in for more. That works. Chief? Chief, did you want to say a whole lot here? Fire away.
Yeah, so a few meetings ago, you guys approved a new squad car, 2025, Explorer from Longreen Motors. I was just told today that that's going to be in production on April 14th. So the quote in front of you tonight is for $19,699.10. That is to outfit the car. So that's all your lights, your sirens, your cage, your radar. So strip the old squad car, put everything in the new one, take the camera out of the old one, put it in the new one. And that's Donald Hermittown, EATI. We've used them several times in the past. They do a great job for us. If we have any issues, they're an hour away, so.
Wonderful. It sure went up years ago. If you don't, I think it was like $6,000.
Yeah, you're right. It was. I look back, I think in the 23 squad, we was around 14.
Yeah, I mean, wow.
Yep.
I actually didn't think it was all that out of line. I mean, I didn't, I don't know many of these people that put these in, but from what the description of every part that goes in there seemed pretty, pretty good to me.
The mask. A lot of that is dog oriented too, isn't it?
Exactly.
Like deals. I didn't bat an eye at the 19. I'm used to that from you.
I'm learning from Jerry. So there's not.
Oh, my God.
Well, as, as stated in the literature, obviously it was in the budget that was put forth, so.
Nice.
We have motion to move?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Purpich, Koyvenen? Any further discussion, gentlemen? Anything else from you? Chief?
Nothing.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. All right. Next up is hiring of two part-time library clerks. Applications were received and reviewed and Mary Ellen Higgins, our library director, interviewed eight candidates. Mary Ellen, if you'd like to step forward and speak, we would love to hear from you.
Overall, we received quite a few applications. We interviewed about half of the applicants. Some, some didn't respond. Some of the people we were interested in interviewing just didn't respond to the reach out. After reviewing all of the candidates and the interviews, we are putting forth two names. And I'm going to mangle Michelle's last name because I forgot to re-ask her how to pronounce it. I believe it's Michelle Maust, Maust?
Muska.
Muska? Okay. I'm a sweet Irish woman. And the other gal is Lauren Seaman. There were some excellent candidates, but we just, these were the top of the top. In the past, we've been lucky to have one or two. So we're really blessed right now to have these two available. And they're, they're both very interesting.
Wonderful. That's good news. Do we have a good, we have a good library. I'd like to see it staffed right to where it's supposed to be. I, I would hope that the people of Evolith would utilize it. It's, it's a good, good spot.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion to move to accept those two?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Purpich? Any further discussion, gentlemen? I am thankful, is the way I'll put it. I am thankful. Take a little stress off of Mary Ellen and, and put more, more hands into, into the library to help out with people. So that's great. With that, all in favor of the hiring of these two part-timers? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, welcome aboard. All right. As we say, welcome aboard, then we move into the words of resignation from Cassidy Campsola in EMT. Looking to make her last day within the next week here. Is there a motion to move?
So moved.
Support by Koyvenen, second by Lilis. Any discussion?
Send the appropriate letter of thanks and.
Yes.
Yeah, I liked her letter. I liked where it wasn't just a, here's my last day.
She did a lot of good work for us. She was there, so sorry to see her go.
Again, we'll have to find somebody as good as she was, you know, and just find somebody that's going to come back on. Like John always says, we train them and they leave, you know, and get them going and they take off.
No one's going to, no one's going to feed their family.
No, no.
So these people move on through their lives with their careers and stuff.
Volunteerism is.
We have been blessed with, with a lot of applicants that come on.
The city of Evolith and, and you up there have turned out a lot of great people. We know it's a stepping stone, you know, a couple of years and they move on. I've got to meet a lot of them and I'm happy for them.
They're scattered pretty much all over. Some went pretty far. Yeah. But that's life. But we'll find someone who'll step up and, you know, when one goes, it's not so bad. When you lose 10, then there's a problem, you know, but one at a time, it's, we fill the gas. But anyway, sorry to see you go, Cassidy.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your, for your time and your efforts and everything I can only imagine that you've saved and helped with. So all in favor of this unfortunate thing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to Cassidy. Next up is our lease agreement between the city of Evolith and the Evolith Heritage Society. Just as a quick breakdown for people at home, the Heritage Society leases some space in the basement of the library and it's where they hold on to their treasures and work towards their, their goals. And we work with them. How long has it been? Okay. They've been there for a few years and looking to move forward to work with us. Like I said, it'll be at the basement of the library. So is there a motion to move on this lease agreement?
So moved.
Move by Purpich?
Support.
Support by Lilis? Any further discussion? I know that they have reached out, well, they've knocked on my door a little bit, asking when the school is ours, if that's something we can look into for a possibility. Well, of course, they didn't really want to save more money, but they understood. But more space, giving Mary Ellen then her space back as well. But I just let them know that at this point in time, that's not something that we can, we can do. So that's what I have. All in favor of this lease? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last will be the appointment of fire department officers. I'm just going to read the list out so everybody hears what it is. Fire department officer positions are for three-year terms. The positions of fire chief, captain training officer, and lieutenant safety officer were recently posted. Letters of interest were received by Guy Spurlin, the fire chief, Cassie Krasky for captain training officer, and Tony Menard for lieutenant safety officer. City council safety committee, both Koyvenen and Lilis here reviewed the above letters of interest and recommend these appointments. So with that being said, just do it as a whole?
Yes, please.
We'll do it as a whole. So it will be a motion for Guy Spurlin to be fire chief, Cassie Jellin for captain training officer, and Tony Menard for lieutenant safety officer. We have a motion to move.
So moved.
Move by Lilis?
Support.
Support by Rousey? Any conversation, discussion on that, gentlemen?
Just shout out to all of these folks. They've been in their position now, have served for at least two years and doing a good job. We really appreciate your service.
Absolutely. None of this stuff can happen without the amazing volunteerism that we get. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up then will be our presentations of our, any committee reports? We can just kind of roll around the table if you gentlemen would like. Mr. Koyvenen, anything that you have?
Well, I have no, no reports because we have a meeting coming up that we forgot about and didn't forget about it. It's just a new time and stuff. I would just like to say one thing about all the news that's been coming. And I can't speak for anybody else. This is just the way I feel. I am for the Hockey Hall of Fame staying here. And I'll end it at that.
Mr. Purpich?
This has been ongoing for quite a few months and the, the board, the hall was asked to keep this under wraps while all the people in the metropolitan area got their eggs in a, got all their ducks in a row and we were just left out in the cold. I too, for the Hockey Hall of Fame staying up here. State of Minnesota wants tourism. This is a tourist area with hunters and fishermen and hikers and RTBs and everything that we have in this area. And the hockey hall stands as one of those places that these people go to. We need that. We need the Hockey Hall of Fame to stay here in Evolith.
Mr. Lilis?
I have no committee reports, but I would like to echo both councillors' position. I'm 100% behind the Hockey Hall of Fame staying here in Evolith. I've expressed that previously and will continue to do so going forward. Which is what I have to report.
Look at our chief's patch. I mean, the patch has been meant a lot to the city, but for a long time have used it for everything. And I mean, that's, it just leaves a bad taste in my mouth and we shouldn't have to be in this spot right now where we're at, you know, but I want to leave it there. You know, the big stick would look kind of funny on there.
Mr. Rousey?
Well, I, I have a lot of mixed feelings about the Hockey Hall of Fame. I did start there back in '72 as the custodian and basically, you know, when it was the very first day I started there. So I, I grew up really enjoying the place. I think that to lose the Hockey Hall of Fame out of Evolith would be a pretty severe blow to, to everyone here, both mentally and, and financially. I believe that there is something there. However, I am under the understanding that our ability to, other than just shout really loud, that we don't have too much skin, but too much say in the matter. As far as, you know, we can have a letter of what we want and our support and everything, but we don't get to vote on it or anything like that. It's not in our hands. But I too would not like to see the hall move. But if it does go, I want a huge slab of that pie because they're going to be getting some cash down there out of it and I think they ought to pump a bunch back up here, guaranteed. But I don't want to see it go, don't get me wrong. But if it's going to go, I want to see dual compensation because they're ripping a heart out of our hockey community. There, I wasn't prepared to make a statement, but I guess off the cuff it didn't sound too bad.
Okay.
And no reports on anything else.
No reports on anything else. It seems kind of minute, any other reports that we do have. I did sit down with the convention chamber and had a really nice conversation with the group regarding housing there. Met with the IRRB about two weeks ago about our grant money and sent out an email, like, or excuse me, a phone call, liking to follow up on that conversation so we can have further conversations about our $2 million. After our town hall meeting that we had last week, I just felt like I didn't want to leave a stone not turned over and try to get every answer that we could so we can get the answers that the people were asking for. And it's only fair when you're talking about that kind of money and the commitment that we'd be making to both the property and to the city. So continue down that path. To obviously the elephant in the room and in the city and on the Iron Range, absolutely. We support the Hockey Hall of Fame being in Evolith. There's nowhere else it's supposed to be. However, like you stated, there are competent people that sit in that room that are from the range, that are doing what they need to do. And we as the city will honor whatever decision is made by that. We can support what we want, but we will have to respect what is decided. And our goal is to make sure that we keep a seat at that table so that if there is a decision to ever move it, whether it's today, 10 years, or 100 years from now, that we don't, we don't cut ourselves out from that piece of the pie, as you put it. Our goal needs to look out for our city and we start with, with the support. So to all those on the board that are doing what they're doing, I wish them the best of luck. It's not going to be an easy task, I'm sure, but I've sat in on a little bit of it and they go back and forth. They've got quite the group, so yeah, for sure. Before we go around and catch from everybody else, I would like to set up possibly two meetings, but at least talk about one if we could. I would like to talk about what would we like for our town, excuse me, our timeline for our town hall follow-up meeting to be? Do we want to get the answers and the information from what was kind of spoken about and just get those informations back out via, whether it be the web or something like that? Do we want to have another meeting where we tell them, these are the things you brought to us, these are the things we want to give back? Whether it be something simple, like fix a kegerator and that's done? Or hey, this idea you have is massive, this is going to take us some time? Like, do we want to do that or do we just want to carry on with business as needed and people will see it that we're taking care of these things?
I can give you my perspective of it. The last town meeting we had went over very well. And the only gripe, and I heard from people, was that we did not get the next meeting quick enough. Well, that was because it was the end of the year and we had outgoing people up here. And I said, after the first of the year, we'll have the meeting. So we had the meeting. We got everybody's questions, answers. I think we should have one with, you know, at least two months and, and then we can go from the next, what we hear from then, and maybe go quarterly, you know? But they waited a long time the last time and, and they're like, they get bucky if they don't hear right away, they start making stuff up. And I don't know how they can make up some of this stuff, but I was just flabbergasted, you know? So I think if we keep them in the loop, we won't have to hear it. And I think they deserve it because they're taxpayers in the city. So that's how I feel. Okay.
I concur that we should probably be looking at a quarterly meeting if possible. That would be my view.
Yeah.
I would, I would say a quarterly meeting sounds good, but there's nothing stopping us from slamming something in the water bill and saying, well, we're going to have, something's come up or we get enough people asking and, and maybe have one in two months, you know, except, but whatever. But to have one in two months right now wouldn't be a bad idea either.
We just want them, we just want them to know that we're listening and we're listening to what you say and we want to get it back to you that we're not just throwing it out the door.
He gave you a little progress report in two months, you know?
It behooves me.
It behooves us to get some progress. Word of the day, huh?
Oh, he's, that's when he says it, it's like, yes. I love when he says behooves me.
It's got to be special, King.
Yeah.
Mr. Purpich, you got a thought?
No, I agree. You know, this last town meeting we had was a good one, I thought. I agree with Joe here that we should catch up real quick and then maybe quarterly after that. Yeah, I, I think, you know, and if, and again, you know, you've opened up our meetings to the three-minute talk. If somebody has something to say, come on up and, you know, we've sat here a lot of times with nobody in this, in this room and if you have something to say, well, we're willing to hear your three minutes and, you know? And I, I think that's good. If something came up that wasn't announced at the meeting, or if you thought of something when you left that night, come and bring it up to us and certainly we'll, we'll look at it. But I agree with Councillor Koyvenen that we should just maybe two months, go back and then do it quarterly after that.
Okay.
That's the plan.
So my thought was, before we started talking, is I'd like to do five this year and then go to quarterly after this. Five only being this year because I wanted to fast-track the first one so that people understood that we weren't just.
Long that.
Getting together. Yeah. So if you gentlemen don't mind kind of looking at maybe end of April, we'll, we'll take a look at your calendars and we'll, at the next meeting, we'll talk about end of April somewhere in there, finding one that works. And we'll aim for that. Whether it's end of April, beginning of May, but we'll aim for that window.
At least, and then they'll know that they're, we're not just.
It's heading forward.
Yes.
Yep. And myself, Jackie, and a small team are going to go through the list that was created and we're going to get answers for those things and we're going to get the word out on a lot of them.
Agreed.
Appreciate that. And then also I'd like to set up a workshop if we could for next week sometime, discuss some of the stuff that was brought up at the town hall, see if there are things that we can tackle, but then there's a few other things that people have been calling me about, asking questions. And I'd like for them to just be able to come in and talk to everybody instead of me standing solo, going, you know, I'm not really sure about that, or I better talk to somebody about that. I want to give them the right answers on how we all feel.
Perfect.
Is there a day or a night that works better that doesn't work? Everybody's good? That means I look at mine?
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be the problem, is what you're saying?
Except for, hey, there's nothing I can.
That's fair.
For me, anyway.
I think so.
And how many day advance? Is it 72 hours? Is it?
Three.
Three days?
I don't know.
Please maybe do the math quick. That's 72 hours. Joel, thank you. I am good. I would, I would like to avoid Thursday, but other than that, we can work with what works.
I can make myself available most any date, preferably not Friday.
Okay. And these gentlemen to our left, they have their meeting at 3:30 with the airport on Tuesday. So just want to aim for Wednesday? Does 2 o'clock work better for the workshops for you guys? I'm okay with that.
Oh, yeah. Nap time is 5:30.
Oh, boy.
2 o'clock would be.
What day is next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday is the 12th.
The 12th.
Yeah, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, the 12th. And we can go, we can go with 2 o'clock. I'm fine with the workshops being at that time, but.
Do you think it would be at all, I don't know, possible, impossible for us to meet with like the Hockey Hall of Fame people so we know exactly what's going on?
I guess.
Do you have time to do that?
I mean, I, I guess if, if we want to do it as a folder, we need to do it at a workshop, correct?
I think, I myself, I kind of know what's going on and you kind of know what's going on. I don't know, Perk knows some, but I think John and, and Councillor Lilis need to know the whole story rather than bits and pieces. And if we could get.
Absolutely.
The board member, Mr. Bezelli, to come up and, and we'll pick a date and they could come and explain to us what's going on. And then we'll know for sure if that would work for you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, if we can do the, the 12th at 2 o'clock and the, the different people that wanted to chat with us about things, we can just kind of window them. 2 o'clock and go through from there. And if somebody has pressing reasons to leave, we'll let them go first.
Because I got a couple of questions and I know these guys don't, you know, this way they'll know everything.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm game with that.
Then we go, then we go from there.
I'll put them as one of the, the few that want to chat with us.
Yeah. But there's a few that talk about us.
Yeah. Well, it's all good things, I hope.
It's all good.
All right. Chief, anything from your neck of the woods that you need to bring to the board?
Nothing else tonight, Mayor. Thank you, though.
Wonderful. Anything from Public Works going on?
Sorry, Mayor. Nothing.
That's not a sorry. That is a, that is a mark. Very big thank you.
Mark, you're in a position, you know, the zero is Mark, you're not Sheriff.
Jerry gave me an easy night.
Oh, I like it. I like it. Anything for you, Mr. Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor, Mayor.
We'll take that too. Jackie, do you have anything you need to add?
I don't. Thank you, though.
Wonderful. And Joel?
No, Mayor.
I'm glad you joined us this evening.
Glad to be here.
All right. With that, we can set to adjourn this meeting and we will look forward to getting together again for a work meeting, Wednesday, the 12th at 2 o'clock. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.